Newport City Council meeting to order from Monday, August 1st, 2022, 6:30 PM. City Council Room, all members of the council are present. Others include James Johnson, Atlord Treasurer, and Laura Dogan, our City Manager. The second item on the agenda is to approve the minutes of July 11th, 2022.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the minutes of 11 July 2022.
Motion made by Mr. Wilson, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Charbonneau, any discussion on the minutes? Then hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it, motion carries. Next, comments by members of the public, we have Ann Shirolo. Our city buildings metered for water, does the city pay the water sewage fund? The water used by the city?
Yes.
The building, the city buildings are metered?
Yes.
And you keep track of?
And we pay.
And we pay. Moving on, the next item is the acknowledgement of environmental restrictions and rights of access between Central Maine and Quebec Railway, U.S. Incorporated, and the State of Vermont Agency of Natural Resources. We have a gentleman here, any name?
My name is John Schmelzer, and I'm with the Vermont Department of Environmental Conservation, which is under the Agency of Natural Resources, and I want to thank you all for having me at your meeting and let me answer a question. I believe many of you have had, were able to look at the briefing of what the request was, and to back up a little bit, we've been working with Central, excuse me, with Canadian Pacific on this property and doing remediation there since 1996, '97. This was a rail yard for a very long time, still a rail yard, and much of the work that we've done, we included, we removed some contaminated patrolling sediments that were in the South Bay, right next to, there was an old discharge of a skimmer where they had an oil-water separator, and when they cleaned out their diesel engines at the time that was allowed, which hasn't been allowed for quite a long time. So that was removed. There was a lagoon, I guess back in 19, in the early 70s, there was a massive release of a diesel tank, and at the time they went in, they put in these renews to prevent the water from going directly into the lake, and there was some sediment there that we removed. And then there was almost an acre of fuel oil that was in the central yard that was floating on top of the groundwater, and we went in and removed, or Canadian Pacific removed, I think we removed over 15,000 cubic yards of material. And we did it in stages, so we put the contaminated soil, we flushed it with air, they put tarts on it so it wouldn't go in the atmosphere, kind of enhanced, let the bugs eat the patrolling contamination piles. So it's been a long time, there was a lot of phases. From our perspective, that act of remediation is done, so the last step that we need is, we don't think any additional work is needed at this site as long as it stays a rail yard. If it changes its use, then additional work will likely need to be done. So what this instrument does, the grant of environmental easement and right of access, it basically says if any additional, if any work is being done on that site, you need to know about it. So if there is a change of use, we're going to be able to have discussions with Canadian Pacific or whoever that new owner is, of what needs to be done to ensure that it's protected and helping the environment. And what we're requesting from the council is acknowledgement of that, requesting your consideration and written concurrence if you choose, so the governor's office knows that we have communicated to the city and they are aware of this, of this right that we're looking to obtain from this property.
I'm assuming right now of Canadian Pacific, they're not the exact owner, are they?
Well, it's a subsidiary.
They're a subsidiary, but I'm assuming if they had to do any major work, they always have to go through you folks.
That's correct, and this easement really clarifies what needs to be done. It formalizes that, and I believe that your attorney has looked at this as well?
Yes.
And had questions on it, and in fact, I apologize for, we called the town of Newport, so I'm glad that was hot, I apologize for that.
Questions from members too?
Over the years, all this remediation from by the state, have they been putting some of the cash on?
They've been, all of it.
That's good, alright.
Yeah, yeah, we have not, we have not paid for any of the cleanup.
And with everything over there now, do you feel confident nothing is leaching into the lake?
Based on what we've had, we believe we address the source. Now, the one thing about this, we're saying that work can stop, but if we get additional information that shows something else is happening, new information, we can go back and address that. But based on everything that we've done, there was, at one time, there was contaminated groundwater that was going into the South Bay, and they put in an interceptor trench, and then they ran it through carbon, so sort of discharged, it was clean, went into the lake. All that contamination was, well, we worked on for almost 10 years where we removed all that soil. So you no longer have that contamination listed.
Because it's been a rail yard for well over 100 years.
Exactly.
I mean, my father was a railroad man there, and so it's been a railroad for a long, long time, way back in, I say 40s, 50s, 60s, they didn't really care about where they dumped things. Kind of like out of sight, out of mind.
And I think a lot of the cleanup that we, that was done there addressed?
All those pasts.
Those past releases. Going forward, it's, my understanding in my discussions with Canadian Pacific is that they're not planning to go anywhere, and they want to keep that as a rail yard, but what this formal, this does, it formalizes that, so even if it does transfer ownership, these use restrictions and right of access for us to go there are secure in the record.
Very good. Council member questions?
I have got a question. So I understand that this is just like, so that we know what's going on, it's just that piece.
Right.
I just want to be reassured that since we're going to sign off on something that says we know about this, that this agreement is being made, that we know that there's contamination, those types of things are going forward, we're not going to get caught somehow for liability for knowing we should have known?
You are not signing any legal document.
Okay.
What I would, what I request would just be something in the minutes that says that you acknowledge that this has taken place between the state and Canadian Pacific, and you have no concerns for objections, however you want to phrase here, but it's not, it's not a legal document or binding or anything.
We'll hold you that for next 100 years.
Alright, no problem.
Okay.
I'll be around.
I won't be around, so it's okay, don't have to worry.
Council members, any other questions?
Is it going to be regularly tested to see if there's more contaminants living on, or?
Well, I think based on the work that we've done, we're confident that no additional work or monitoring is needed at this time.
And is my understanding that if Canadian Pacific, right?
Yep.
They sell, they want to do something different, that it's their responsibility to inform the state, is that how it works? I mean, who's responsible for telling you?
This does talk about that, it's like if there is a transfer in ownership that we're notifying. But even if that wasn't the case, this is bound in the land, and given it's a commercial property and the due diligence that's required when you do a property transfer, this easement is going to be in the land.
That was my question here, I assumed that it was going to get recorded downstairs.
Yes, it will be, yeah. This is the first step, this is the first step. Second step is to go to the governor's office to get their concurrence for any type of acquiring of any type of property rights, it needs to go through the governor's office, and then after that, then we're going to work with Canadian Pacific, or Canadian Pacific will make sure that it's entered into the record.
So we would need a motion basically from the council to support, I guess acknowledging the receipt of this, and probably saying, in a way, somebody was supporting?
I think there was some draft language that's in?
The draft language is that the council has considered the grant of environmental restrictions and right of access placed on a parcel of this railroad property, a 758 South Yard Road, and sees nothing concerning.
That's in the other memo?
It's in the memo.
That was in the first paragraph, right?
Yeah, it's basically paraphrased from the first paragraph.
Okay. So is that, is he here to make that the motion?
Make that motion.
Mr. Vashon, is there a second to that motion?
I'll start.
Seconded by Mr. Charbonneau, any more discussion from council members?
I'm a ten-las Newport resident. Where did the contamination of the soil go? How much was left us, where did it go?
That's a good question. So most of the soil went to the Coventry landfill.
Do you know how long it went?
Yes, it went, we had some soil that was there in 2002, and 2005, and also we had soil that, that, and then around 2005 as well, and again, 2005 for the central yard.
And was it tested for specific contamination?
Yes, yes.
Is there a way to get on this?
There is a corrective action plan that has all that information in it of what was sampled.
I can get that from D.C.
You can get that, yes.
Thank you.
Sure.
Ann Shirolo, Newport resident. There's one image in that covenant or agreement that you're making with the railroad that suggests something about them not doing anything intentionally or recklessly harmful, but there's nothing that, it doesn't include negligence, and I was wondering whether or not somehow that could make them free in some way to do negligent actions.
Understate statute, if someone does the waste to the environment, they're liable. This does not in any way change that.
Right. Okay, we have a motion on the floor, any other discussion? Then all those, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it, motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to have a copy of the document that you signed.
I'm not signing anything, it's just basically acknowledging.
It's on our wish, so if you do anything, let me know.
Okay, and what, Mr. Mayor, what were the contaminants, what was in the soil that were taken to Coventry?
Primarily patrolling contamination. And there were, there were some that had some elevated metals, but it was primarily patrolling diesel.
And Mr. Mayor, is those contaminants still there that are stopping it from going in the soil at the landfill?
Pardon?
What's stopping it from going in the soil at the landfill?
It's going to a line landfill, so that line landfill has a line underneath it that contains the soil in the lane. And then that's, and I know that the city knows all about the leachate that's coming from the landfill, that is part of that. If there is anything that we just threw, it goes into the leachate, and that is tested regularly for those compounds.
What's regularly?
I don't, I don't know what that is, I'd have to talk with our solid waste folks.
We are not, and just to once again make it clear, we no longer accept leachate or the Act 250 expansion permit, so I don't want any misconception that we're again taking leachate where we're not. Right now, my understanding is it's mostly going to Plattsburgh, New York right now.
That's my understanding as well.
They've expanded their capacity to accept it over in New York, and so.
Is it on the lease cap?
I don't think Mark Hoyer's taking it anymore either.
That's my understanding.
It's all going to Plattsburgh, New York, and they were like, open arms, I guess, and expanded this land to accept it, so what's the saying, I guess, I hate to say it, out of sight, out of mind? It's not a good thing to say, but, okay.
But at one point, you were taking leachate that had the potential to have this contaminated soil?
Yes, but remember, as we said, el leachate was completely treated, and at the time, we were all well within the standards of what was acceptable by the State of Vermont and even the EPA at the time.
What do you?
And I don't remember all those standards, I look at that as we haven't taken it, we won't be able to take it because of the permit, so you ask me what the standards are now? I have no idea anymore.
When did you stop taking the leachate?
Was it 2019?
2019, when Act 250 granted the permit for the expansion.
Great, alright, thank you.
Any more questions?
Nope, very good.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You have a pad?
No.
Can I have you write your name down?
Okay, the next item is confirmation of the perpetual maintenance of the storm drainage system for the Marina project. We have Tom here, if you'd like to give a brief overview, I guess, or, it's just a continuation of the agreement that we entered into with MWA for the project that, I call it the old teddy bear, correct?
Correct, this agreement is basically to, piece of state law, saying that we are going to take care of the storm warning system for 10 years. We also have a contract or agreement that we're going to do with Doug Spates, the landowner, basically stating that we are going to take care of the system for life. Basically, it's going to be our storm warning system, so we are going to maintain it, clean it, and upkeep it when it needs to be.
Questions from councilmen?
Tom, I have one question on, when I was reading through this, three times on the third page, we talked about BMP, construction completion, BMP used for life, what is BMP?
I don't have that one yet.
I'm Patrick Hurley with Metformin, ours association. BMP means best management practice, so anything from silt vents to straw, mulch, things like that.
No, it's good, because sometimes when you're reading this stuff, usually paragraphs on the bottom, they'll spell it out once, and then, I looked everywhere. Thank you. Other questions regarding this?
And we, excuse me. Did I get a, oh no, okay, hold on, underline a couple things so I don't lose my place. Okay, so we need a motion to agree to the perpetual maintenance of the storm drainage system for the Marina project. We need a motion.
Some moves?
Motion made by Mr. Vashon, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Wilson, discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Do you guys like a copy of this now?
Yes.
Oh, you want one? This is also on our website, but I'm actually going to give this to MWA. I'll be right back.
Okay, I'll wait a minute.
The next item is authorization for grant requests from the Vermont Agency of Community Development, Commerce and Community Development.
Council has in their packet, it's a copy of a letter that serves as a grant request to work with the Agency of Commerce and Community Development for release of $40,000 to be used for the purposes of seeking strategies that will work on movement for the Main Street Development Site. We refer to it as the Main Street Development Site, other people refer to it with different terms. There's an effort underway, working with the firm of White and Burke, and these funds will be used to continue that work, and that grant, they're currently working under, expires. It also will fund a study of the state office building to see what type of configuration makes sense for using that, assuming that a whole bunch of shells can move around, we can find something to use for the Main Street, for the vacant Main Street site. So this is a process to release these funds, it's a drawdown grant, not to exceed $40,000, and requires a motion to approve it, as well as a motion to authorize the city manager for signatures on any relevant documents.
Questions from council members?
I had a couple, but I just want to make clear, it's not like I'm anti-development, I just want to understand process a little bit better in this, because it's a big piece. So the, I think the motion that was written or to be used talked about $40,000 being available from, that's fine, we all know where that's from. That White and Burke has been engaged already for this, do we know, I don't need to know the amount, but do we know how much their part of that $40,000 will be?
If I could address that, Mr. Mayor, my name is Mike Welch, and I work with Northern Community Investment Corporation. So right now, White and Burke is under contract to NCIC. As part of a USDA grant that was awarded to NCIC, we've been working on different projects here in Newport for the last four years. Our contract runs out in September of this year. One of the goals of that RCDI grant was to help spur a Yang Street development project. Obviously, that hasn't taken place yet. We contacted White and Burke, because they've done a lot of work in Newport, they do work for the State of Vermont, and we asked them if they would work with us to try to get a project identified and help us work towards site control, because one of the most important things you're going to need to get is site control in order to move forward with any project, and right now, no one has been able to achieve that. And so we contacted White and Burke, that contract runs out in September. This is, I think, an opportunity to continue that work as needed, because it's obviously not going to be done in September, and it also takes advantage of what I believe the governor has said right along, is that all options are on the table when it comes to looking at state office buildings, the existing complex, the courthouse, so working with Dave, and now with a little bit of work on the Amherb Building, to look at some potential reuse of that facility, that's what these funds will be used for. And I think the governor has indicated that he supports that initiative, and NCIC strongly supports it, and I think it's a good opportunity for you and for all of us to continue the work that's been started and try to get a project off the ground. And I'm happy to try to answer your questions.
Just to be clear, I'm not opposed to development or things happening, I just want to understand what's going on a little bit better. So the grant that's, the second grant that would come through, the money that Newport gets for White and Burke, because they couldn't, I mean, this is a continuation, they couldn't get the work done under your contract? Why, what's the situation with that?
Our contract is going to provide certain services that will expire in September of this year. In all probability, there'll be a heck of a lot more work beyond that that will require additional services from an organization such as White and Burke, and that is what these funds have been allocated for.
So, and I know you can't divulge detail, but in general terms, like what, what is the type of work that you're doing?
Sure.
Again, I'm not looking for, you know, for confidential information, just in general.
I can, and so basically is to look at options for obtaining site control, so what is the best way to achieve that? Who are the best contacts to move forward with the federal receiver to try to achieve that? What are the potential funding sources to be able to actually generate enough revenue to purchase the property or hold the property? What are the carrying costs associated with that? How are those costs going to be taken care of? What is the correct entity to hold the parcel? There is a development corporation that's already doing work at the Bogner site, is that the right entity to hold the parcel? What is the financial structure for a potential project? So there's a lot of different funding opportunities, via through the Newmarket Tax Credit Program, through the Opportunities Zone Program, through Northern Borders, through the Community Development Block Grant Program, through the State of Vermont itself has allocated capital reserve funds, so there's a bunch of different moving pieces analyzing a financial structure that works to take advantage of as many of those resources as possible to make a project feasible. It's going to take a lot of funding and a lot of different sources to make that happen.
Right, maybe there's examples of that around the state.
There are, yeah, many, many, and that a private developer never would have been able to achieve that on its own without those additional resources.
So if, has an agreement been made with White and Burke yet? Do we know how much they're costing?
The only agreement that has been made with White and Burke right now is the agreement that NCIC has to do that, and that is for specific services that I just described, and that will run out when our grant with USDA runs out. And just as, just to also throw this out where it's worth, is that when we requested permission to contract with White and Burke for this work that is being paid for by this USDA grant, we did receive authorization from USDA to move forward with that. So it is a process and a approval from a federal agency that allowed us to move forward with that, with that contract.
So it's the $40,000 for the White and Burke contractor?
A part of it.
And then, well, not all of it, that was my next question, we don't know, we have the sample thing says, you know, White and Burke and another consultant, if they come in at $39,999, what happens?
It's already, there's already, from now, it's already been.
Okay, that's what I was, that was what I was wondering, and then?
And it's within the $40,000 total.
Yeah, and so then for the next, for the one for the state building, which I guess, I work in the state building, should I be back in, out of my office?
I would say it's a little early for that, but that has been one, that's, that's not news in Newport, that the state building's been on the table for alternative uses, that's, I don't believe that's new news.
And so, so for the second consultant, in our, they had talked about, you know, to look at the state building and what to do with that, so is that somebody chosen, I don't, again, I don't particularly need to know, somebody already chosen for that, or is that going out for an RP, or how would anybody know that they could apply for that piece?
It's a very good question, and the way that this worked was that we were all trying to move very quickly to get some work done. White and Burke reached out to an architectural firm that was familiar with that building and got a proposal for doing this analysis. He gave those estimates to me first to try to see how could I work this into NCIC's agreement. We weren't able to bring together enough funds to do that. There were some other alternatives, but we couldn't do that. That's when the opportunity came up to utilize these Newport funds to try to keep this process moving. So it was Dave White that made the initial contact, it was an architect that's familiar with the property, and he's been authorized to proceed.
So the contract will continue with you, with that, well, it moved over to the city, since these are coming to the city?
Well, I think that's to be determined, I think at this point, it's all kind of a gentleman's agreement that things are moving forward. NCIC, I think, is certainly open, if you want a contract with us to continue the Dave White contract with this subcontractor, we're certainly open to that. That hasn't been decided yet, but we're certainly open to that.
Well, no, I was just curious, how it was going to be continuing if it's running out for you in September?
I think.
And these initial funds were coming to? And these additional funds were coming to the city. I didn't know if there were, if there's going to be a new contract or amendment to have it all go through the city, or continue status call, basically, and go through NCIC.
I think either one of those options is possible, Mr. Mayor. I think the city could negotiate a separate contract, completely removed from our agreement, or we would be happy to work on an amendment that satisfies the city and White and Burke and the sub to continue the work. So I think either one of those is a possibility.
My only reason I'm asking is I had a fear of, all of a sudden, the bill comes in at eighty thousand. I'm going, getting, you know, things change, and, and, okay, where's the forty thousand, the extra forty thousand going to come from, or, you know?
And that, that won't happen, because as of this point, the additional services for White and Burke have not even been defined yet. So, I mean, that, those monies have been allocated with the intention that there would be additional work that we needed. That hasn't been defined, what that is, as of this point.
Any other questions? We have to have a motion first. I guess we need a motion to approve this. I would guess approve the funds, but I think any contract or any future type contract, whether it's with NCIC or the city, if the city, it's on behalf of the city, the council should see it. You know, any type of agreement, the council needs to see to be in the loop. It's got to be kept in the loop on all aspects of this. As we all know, I'll get my little editorial comment, it's the receiver that's holding things up, because the governor said the state had made an offer on the property and the receiver turned him down. So it's basically the holdup is the receiver, because the state did make a good, good faith offer, and the receiver said no. So, which is a little disconcerting, especially since I was in a meeting with the receiver, who basically said he would do whatever it would take to make Newport whole again, and now he's turning into, in my opinion, a bottleneck. But if this can help move the process along, and you're right, the State Office Building's been on discussed for the last five years, I think at least possibly doing things with it, so I guess.
Well, actually, can I just, I don't actually know if it's a question or, just following up on that, because again, if we authorize all documents just to be signed by the City Manager, just realize it's efficient and, you know, moves things along, so the council's role in all of this would just be after, after the action's been taken, just information when it comes to us after things have already been done. Does that make sense? And again, I just, I just want to know its process and how is this going to work?
There's two pieces, and you know, not making it more complicated than it has to be, but the, the architectural work has been, he's been given a notice to proceed, so whatever his contract is, I don't know, I'm not sure who it's with, he was given authorization to proceed, and he's proceeded. And so that commitment has been made for a certain sum.
Oh, sorry, is that the architect of White and Burke? No, this is your architect?
White and Burke is not an architect, they're a real estate builder, right? The architect has been given a notice to proceed with an analysis of the State Office Building, as a separate architectural firm.
And that's out of the forty thousand?
That's correct. A small.
So who approved that?
The state authorized us to, that they, the state indicated that they would make a portion of these funds available for that purpose, when we were all looking for money to pay for that service so that we could keep the project moving forward. So I think there's two answers to your question. Number one, that, that piece has already been committed, regardless of who the contracting agency is, somewhere there should, there should be a contract developed, and that he's going to want to get paid for the work that's been done. Contract with White and Burke, if there even is going to be one, hasn't been developed yet. It hasn't been defined, a dollar amount hasn't been set to it. But you would have funds available to do work with White and Burke if you wanted to do so. Okay? Just to be clear, I don't want to give you the impression that you're going to be able to approve a contract that's already in motion.
And again, it's just about process.
No, I get it. No, I get it.
There's a lot of moving parts, and, you know, everybody can do the work, but anything, when people are upset, or people don't like what they, it's puzzled, and if we don't have any knowledge or anything what's going on, it's a little hard.
I understand that one hundred percent.
So we need a motion to approve the authorization for the grant request from the Vermont Agency of Commerce and Community Development. It's a grant request totaling not to exceed forty thousand dollars.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Mr. Wilson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Basham, discussion from council members?
Mr. Mayor, may I learn from Mike Welch, what the scope, I don't understand what the scope of what White and Williams was supposed to do that's running out in September, what, what product do we have by September, what they're supposed to do, for how much money, if that's possible, or of order, how much money, how often they'll lend, so that I know what my forty thousand is going to be able to do subsequently?
I'll have to let Mike answer that, because that was with NCIC and White and Burke. That wasn't with the city.
So this is our contract with White and Burke, and we have, the total amount is not to exceed thirty-four thousand dollars. We entered into this agreement probably a couple of months ago. The scope of work will include assisting us in terms of reviewing background materials regarding previous files on the city of Newport, the courthouse project, and the vacant Main Street project. Visit Newport to examine current conditions and recent improvements. Meet with representatives of this agreement to learn about current issues and opportunities, particularly focused on potential business expansions or development opportunities, and the constraints that may be holding those back. Learn about funding in hand or potential funding available to assist with pre-development planning and project implementation. Meet with the state of Vermont, Building and General Services, and the Agency of Commerce and Community Development to inquire about previous discussions with the receiver about the Main Street property, status of planning for the renovation or relocation of Superior Courthouse and associated state offices, a willingness to consider being a participant in a major new development project, potentially including the Superior Court and other offices, and then analyzing funding opportunities. Review the current zoning for the downtown, which is also under review. Jointly determine whether to approach the receiver again, and if so, which entity or which person is best to do that. Make recommendations about next steps. So that's our contract with White and Burke.
And why will that project not be completed by September? When, when there was an agreement to do all of that for that amount of money by the end of September?
That project will be completed by the end of September, but it's not going to be an actual development project ready to proceed. It's going to be an analysis of the items that I just talked about. It'll be recommendations about funding opportunities. So it'll be recommendations about structure, it'd be recommendations about a purchase price and entity to proceed. So there'll be a series, a report that will be generated from this that will complete this contract, but there'll be a heck of a lot more work left to do once that is done. We've been in this process now for over five years, and nothing has happened. So it's going to take some time to bring that to fruition. Here.
Thank you. And the project that came to my mind is getting multiple funding sources, was the Putnam Block, I think that was fifteen funding sources down there, just to get that building. That was just a rehab of a building, that wasn't a major construction, that was a rehab.
You can imagine the complexity associated with having to put all that together.
Right, and it was, that was public, private, all these different grants. And you mentioned different funding, that's what came to my mind, because I saw the number of sources. And, and as we all know, it costs the same to build here as it does in Chiklin County, yet the rents here are basically half, or even less than half of what they are in Chiklin County. So no developer's going to come right in, pay whatever the receiver wants, and then to be able to remediate it and build a new building, and expect to get the rents to make it even worth his wire or her wire, anyone's wire. And so that's why it needs this analysis to be done, to try to figure out everything.
And I appreciate the work that goes into this.
Mr. Mayor, I was wondering about the benefit of additional analysis without site control?
That's an outstanding point. When we started this, our primary goal is site control, and that will be a major piece of what comes out of this. A big part of it is the price of the property. Nobody wants to overpay for the property, but the reality is, to gain control of the site, you may have to. And in order to do that, you may have to find funding sources that are willing to pay that excess amount of value to acquire the property. And that's part of the reality, but that is, you really do need site control before you can do much of anything. Otherwise, it's all pipe dreams. You could sell it tomorrow, but not like you could have it.
No. Okay, anything else? Did we have a motion?
Can I, can I ask you a question? I was going to ask Mike what the difference between this study and the other ones we've done before, and you explained it pretty well. But, you know, I see a lot of people, particularly people from out of town, they come through here and they ask, what's happening with the hole in the ground? You know, we've been at this for five, six, seven years, and I, I hate to see you keep going with study, one study after another, and be another seven or eight years where anything happens. My, my personal opinion is, somebody knew what was happening when this whole thing went down. And I, I think the state, somebody should be leaning on the state to do some serious negotiation with that receiver, because in my opinion, I think the state owes us. That's my personal opinion.
And I, I don't disagree with any of that, Jim. I think part of us have kind of set back to try to let nature take its course, and that we heard rumors of different development opportunities, and just hoping that would materialize. The state's budgeted plenty of money to look at purchasing the land, they couldn't make a deal, so.
I know it's a long process. We go another seven years, fourteen years, and half our Main Street's sitting there empty. Somebody got something.
No, I agree with that, and that's why, that is why we're trying to do something instead of not doing anything.
And at least he did.
That was just my opinion, I had that.
And at least the receiver did budge on the Bogner property.
Yeah.
You know, and let it allow tract to expand once they get everything settled, but they see, so it does move a little, but not as much as we'd like, or as quick as we'd like, so. Okay, we have a motion?
And just for the record, the city does not have control of the property, right?
That's correct.
Yeah.
Nobody does, except that federal receiver.
That's my classic answer to people. City doesn't own that property.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
O's, ayes have it, motion carries.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, Mike.
Mr. Mayor.
Hold on, I'm sending this document.
Mr. Welch, a few minutes ago, did this, negotiated price set for the work that White and Burke is going to, is going to do, did I hear that correctly?
That was the, there's a price for the work that NCIC has hired White and Burke to do. There's no price that's been negotiated for anything beyond the contract I just described.
So that, Mr. Mayor, so that's not, has nothing to do with this forty thousand?
That's correct.
Gotcha, okay. And I'd like to have a copy of the contract that you were talking about, that it fines in September?
I'd be happy to provide.
If you could, if you could provide that to me, that would be awesome. And, Mr. Mayor, do you, what's the asking price for, I, I thought the vacant lot, I think I'm still can call it the development lot. We're talking about the front space block, is that, I mean, never, in my business, never assume anything. And do we know what the price is, or does the city know what current asking price is?
I don't.
The state offered what, one point one million?
I thought it was one point two.
Maybe one point two, I think this is what the governor said when he was up there at the ribbon cutting.
Yeah.
And it was either one point one or one point two, and the receiver turned it down.
So, two point, two point five?
I'm going to say that's two point two.
Hey, I'd like to have a copy, I mean, I know it might be on the website, the contract or the agreement that you signed.
It is.
I didn't sign, this was just a letter, a letter, you can have this, it's just, it's just a letter for the grant.
Yeah, but this is also on the website.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. I guess that's it. Thank you, Mike, as always.
You're very welcome. Thank you.
Moving on, the next item is the zoning administrator appointment. We received a memo from the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission interviewed Mr. Francis Cheney in an executive session on July nineteenth, two thousand twenty-two, at their regularly scheduled meeting. Based upon the interview, it is our unanimous recommendation that the city and council appoint Mr. Cheney as the zoning administrator effective immediately. And just for the, it should be a junior, because I think.
I'm the third, actually.
You're the third, though. I always think of you as junior, but your father was Francis.
My father's junior, yes.
Your father's, okay, just a.
I usually leave that off, though, it confuses people.
Oh, okay, then, I didn't know. But it's been recommended by the Planning Commission to appoint Mr. Cheney as the zoning administrator. Are there questions? If there are anything, we need a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I make the motion, we appoint Mr. Francis Cheney to the zoning.
Motion made by Mr. Wilson to appoint Mr. Francis Cheney as our zoning administrator. Is there a second to the motion?
No second.
Second by Mr. Charbonneau, discussion?
I just have a question, will the zoning office have set hours, so the public knows when to, somebody's there?
The zoning board talked to me at length about the need for that. Laura and I are supposed to talk in the morning about how to standardize that. John's gone on vacation, I haven't had a chance to really discuss that, but we're just looking at his priorities. Need goes, but I assume that Laura and I will have that discussed in the interim, because that is the main, one of the main objectives of when I talk to John and the rest of the board. I, I think that that's a priority, yes.
Okay, because it's, what hours are available to the public are important, but even more important is that the hours are consistent, week to week, to week, to week, to week.
Yeah, and that makes sense to me, I'm just not sure what the best set of dates are at this point.
Okay, thanks.
Can you repeat the spell, Mr. Cheney's name?
Do we vote? No, we need to vote. Oh, no, motion, I thought, oh, Cheney. I'm getting ahead of myself, sorry. I was looking for something else. It's C-H-E-N-E-Y. C-H-E-N-E-Y.
F-R-I-N-C-I-S?
F-R-I-N-C-I-S.
The third.
I could do it en français. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
O's, ayes have it, motion carries. Congratulations. Take good luck.
Can I say, I think you made a wise one.
Okay, moving on. Mr. Johnson, new business.
Yeah. I do. I've got an application for a special events permit for Eden Ice Rider Company, to be held on August twenty-fifth. I think it's a taste and sip thing, a back-to-school taste and sip thing. I just need a motion to approve that. That's from five PM to eight PM, it's a three-hour thing.
Are we sending down kids back drunk?
It's a back-to-school YPN event. I assume you're tasting it in Bynett, you're like. Oh, wow. So I need a motion to approve that one. They've had these before.
Someone care to make the motion for the special events permit?
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Mr. Charbonneau, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Basham, discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
O's, ayes have it, motion carries.
Okay, another thing I got, I need approval for a vendor's permit. This is from William Pulakowski, smoking. Uh, this is from William Pulakowski, Smoke and Barrels Barbecue. And he's got all the licenses, he paid the fee, he's got the pictures, he's got the insurance. Looks like he's going to set up a garden in the park with softball games, and maybe the primary market.
Just need a motion on that?
Yeah, I need a motion.
So we need a motion to approve the vendor's permit?
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Mr. Charbonneau, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Bashan, discussion? All those in favor say aye. Oppose, ayes have it, motion carries.
That's all I got. Don't forget, there's an election next year, just in case anybody's forgotten.
Okay.
I don't think anybody had it. Kevin, here. That's all I got.
Okay. Um, Mr. Charbonneau, new business?
No.
Mr. Wilson?
Yeah, just one thing on their new business. A while back, the city of Newport okayed, Newport being a Purple Heart city, and their ceremony is going to be on the Sunday, seventh August, at thirteen hundred hours, at one PM, over in Garden Park.
Any other new business?
No, no.
I don't have any new business. Anything?
I just want to let folks know that the water tower is undergoing maintenance. That project is expected to last about six weeks. Folks may experience low water pressure. We've put a notice on our marquee to alert people that this might happen. Uh, the water pressure should come right back, and if it doesn't, don't hesitate to give us a call, so that you can mobilize as needed. It's only her printing business.
Okay. Mr. Johnson, old business?
No.
Mr. Charbonneau? Mr. Wilson?
No.
Um, I guess the only old business I have, because I have a couple items, um, I just wanted to clarify my request regarding the water meter. I wasn't requesting it to be done immediately. I wanted to know, by the August fifteenth meeting, a timeline. That's all I was asking, how many meters left to install, a reasonable timeline, because without an end date, as I said before, there's no incentive to meter the city. And I just wanted to have that clarified, because there seemed to be some confusion. I wasn't asking that we get metered in the next month or two. I just wanted to know roughly, how many meters are left to install, and a reasonable timeline? Is it two years, five years, ten years, twenty years? Just, you know, some sort of timeline, just we have to put an end date on it, because it goes into perpetuity right now. And so that's what I was asking for that, I just wanted to clarify that. The park here in the municipal building, I know you can't always believe everything you read in the newspaper, but, no offense to this, but I'm curious as to...
Put that in the newspaper.
Put that in the newspaper. No, I'm curious as to, I would like to see, I guess, maybe an income and expense, because when I saw in the paper, where it was quoted as saying, cost overruns are going to be charged to Public Works, I've been selling it to some of the people who were dead set against it, that it wasn't going to cost the city taxpayers any money. It was going to be a grant, and it was going to be the donations. It wasn't, and then when I read in the paper, cost overruns being possibly charged to Public Works, you know, that kind of raised a red flag with me, especially since I've been really, you know, going out on a limb and saying, oh, it wasn't going to cost any taxpayers' money, is how it was being sold. And so I, I guess I'd kind of like to see an income and expense, without having to try to analyze our budget report, um, that we get. It'd be much easier to see that. So that's one thing that I would like to see, I guess that's on the old business. And I, I guess that's it. Any other things to make? Any old business?
Yeah, I'm good.
Any old business?
Just want to remind folks that the first hearing for the Planning Commission's new municipal plan is scheduled for tomorrow night at six-thirty in this room. The second hearing will be scheduled for September twelfth, in front of the city council, and the third hearing will be scheduled October third, in front of the city council.
And that's when we usually vote on it? Right after that third public hearing?
If all goes well, yes. And that's exciting.
If during the public hearings, people can raise questions or concerns, I guess, that gives the opportunity to, I'm assuming there's still opportunity to make a change if you wanted to, if there's enough, you know, with public input. You can always make a change to what's been written in the draft.
Yes.
Okay. Okay. All right. The next regularly scheduled city council meeting will be Monday, August fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two, six-thirty PM, here in the council room. And with that, we need a motion to adjourn at seven-twenty-eight.
So motion?
Motion made, is there a second?
Oh, I see.
Second, made by Mr. Bashan, or made by Mr. Charbonneau?